I'd like to call together. Call together, we're all here together. Thank you. I'd like to call to order our Board of City Commissioners for July 15th. Call and roll, please.
Stevens, AG, Harrod, Harrod.
Here.
Maynard.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
Mary Ann. We have a call.
We have a call. If you're able to stand, please stand with me and we will recite the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us; and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Commissioner Hall, would you read this?
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I ask you a question? Mary Ann, can I ask a question?
Pardon?
Can I ask a question? Since I wasn't here at the last meeting, if...
Yes, you can vote through two groups of minutes. Is that the question?
Thank you.
Yes, you may.
Because you've read.
I did read it.
Okay. First item is consider approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second by Commissioner Hall. Call and roll, please. Hang on.
Harrod.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Question carries.
Item number two, consider approval of the consent agenda.
So move.
Commissioner Harrod.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hall. Call and roll, please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Question carries.
At this time, Commissioners' comments. Item number three. Would you like to say something?
Well, I wasn't here for the big celebration, but I had several people comment that it really was a big success and they certainly did enjoy it. Talked to some people from out of town that came in and the kids had a big time and enjoyed the fireworks. It was a great, great production.
It was very nice.
So, the other thing, if you're trying to get around Shawnee today, it's been a good day to travel because there wasn't any construction anywhere today. You come back home and everything's under construction, so... But today has been a good day to get around because it is construction. I put on my deal the other day that people complained about the traffic and I said, "Well, this is progress." So, I appreciate that. I know Frank and John and so on are taking a lot of conflict about it, but it's a, well, it's a needed, well-needed improvement and I appreciate everybody's effort to see anything get done.
I'd like to just make a brief comment about the debris pickup and what a great job I think the city did on that. There were houses out on the right-of-way and there were root balls bigger than me that I didn't, I was really surprised that they picked those up. They picked everything up out there and it looks great. Just like to thank you for that.
Any additional Commissioners' comments? If not, then we'll move on to item number four, citizens' participation. Again, I will encourage all you citizens who are here that if you want to share something with us, please feel free to do so. Okay, being no citizens' participation or comments, we'll move to item number five. A public hearing and consideration of an ordinance with a conditional use permit for property located at 31504 West Lake Road. Case number PO9-113, applicant Tanya Jennings. Can we have a staff report on this, please, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commission members, the Planning Commission heard this item on July 3rd, 2013, and unanimously recommended approval to you with two conditions. The request specifics are as follows. The subject property is approximately five acres in size and is zoned A1, agricultural. The applicant is requesting placement of a manufactured home on the property. It would be a new manufactured home. As allowable in the Shawnee zoning ordinance, subject to a conditional use permit, a manufactured home may be placed on an A1 zone property. This is a legal A1-zoned lot and it does meet the minimum lot size of five acres. We did not receive any formal comments in opposition to the request. And you will note in the staff report, figure two indicates that there are three adjacent properties that also have a conditional use permit for manufactured homes. So, this request is substantially similar to those requests and staff does also recommend approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
You said there was two conditions?
Yes, sir. Two conditions.
Page two.
It's listed in the staff report, but I'll just, I'll list it.
Page forty-seven, yeah, has the... Yeah, page two of the staff report, page forty-seven of your digital packet has the
formal Planning Commission recommendation.
Yeah.
The conditions are related to the setbacks and that the manufactured home be substantially similar to the one indicated by the applicant.
Once the conditional use is granted, is that, is there a time expire on that or is it whenever it's sold or anything? Does it, does it have to be reapplied or how does that work, Justin?
No, it actually, it actually does run with the, with the property. And so, in many cases, a conditional use is related to a specific, say, business activity or, or use that may be specific to the ownership at that time. But with a, with a manufactured home, obviously those, those tend to change hands more often and that use would, would be allowed to continue. So, if the property owner established this residence and then, and then sold it, then any new buyer could continue, could continue to live there and, and be in compliance with, with this recommendation.
Yeah, we just to get across the question.
Any other questions to Justin? Okay. Doc? I'll open a public hearing in this matter. Anyone like to come forward and speak, comments in favor of this?
I would like to.
Well, if you'd like to come up and state your name and feel free to, or if you, you just, okay, that's fine. Anyone that would like to come up and speak against this? Okay, being no one speaking against, any discussion? Commissioners?
A move that we approve as recommended by the staff.
Second by Commissioner Harrod. Call and roll, please.
Hall.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Question carries.
Question carries. Item number six, consider approval of a final plat for Windermere Edition, Section One, located east MacArthur, west of North Bryan. Case number SO6-13, applicant Greg Brown's Homes. I think we addressed this, didn't we, Justin, by you last? Is this something new here? Wasn't that addressed in the previous meetings?
Have a comment on it, sir.
Okay, sir, please feel free to.
Previously, the preliminary plat was presented to the City Commission. This is, this is the final plat for a portion of, of the overall development site. And so, this request is for final plat of Phase One of Windermere Edition. The total development size, if you might recall from the preliminary plat, was about 26 acres and 72 residential building lots. This portion of that development is, occurs on about 17 acres and includes 43 lots. The Planning Commission also heard this on July 3rd and did also recommend this, did also recommend approval unanimously, subject to seven conditions. There was a lengthy discussion at the Planning Commission meeting regarding the proximity of this property to neighboring property that is used for agricultural purposes and that have horses and other, other similar type uses. And so, after a lengthy discussion, the Planning Commission added an additional condition above and beyond what was recommended by staff and that's reflected as condition number seven in their recommendation, which is on page 60 of your digital packet. And that does require that a notation be included in the covenants associated with this development so that prospective buyers know that they are buying property that is, that is within close proximity to agricultural land and that typical agricultural uses are going to occur. And so, it's, it's kind of a nuisance warning, if you will, that, that allows individuals to, to have that additional notice. Other than that, Mr. Mayor, the, as you mentioned, we did go into detail discussing the overall full project at a previous meeting. So, I'll keep my remarks short and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Anybody have any questions, only?
Oh, just curious, it doesn't really have anything to do with this plat. Does the, does it have sidewalks within? I know it's required to have the six-foot sidewalk along MacArthur, but does the plat itself, do the houses in the addition have sidewalks?
No, ma'am, they do not. There is the sidewalk along MacArthur, but, but not within.
So, I'll call the cul-de-sac. Yeah, okay. Any other further discussion? The Chair will entertain a motion in this matter.
A move we approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hall to approve. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Second by Commissioner AG. Call and roll, please.
Hall.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Item number seven, consider Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund.
I didn't get a chance to comment.
Well, sir, under Citizens' comments, this was not a public hearing.
This project.
Yes, sir. Under, we've had a previous public hearing on that and we heard you, I believe I'm correct on this, this was not a public hearing in this matter. And we heard your comments previously on that at our public hearing when we had it on this matter, okay? Item number seven, consider Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund lump sum payment from defined benefit plan and refund of contributions from the defined contribution plan for Darrell Freeman. Staff report, please.
This is just a retirement and in retirement, an employee has different choices. One choice is to take a pension and another choice is to take a lump sum. A pension is approved on a consent agenda, a lump sum has to be approved on the regular agenda. It's just that he is retiring.
So, he's chosen the lump sum.
He's chosen the lump sum.
And we have to prove that.
You have to approve that.
And it's your recommendation?
Yes, it's my recommendation to approve.
Any other discussion, Commissioners? Okay, Chair will entertain a motion. So move. Commissioner Harrod, approve. Do I have a second?
A second.
Commissioner AG, a second. Call and roll, please.
Harrod.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Question carries.
Item number eight, consider a resolution of support for nomination of Wes Maynard to the OML Board of Directors, District Five. Brian, do you want to say anything on this or do you want me to?
District Five for OML has a seat that's open. I don't know even when Shawnee's had somebody on the board. I told Wes that I thought that some representation on the OML board would probably be a good idea and if he were interested in it, I think it would be a good time to get some more voice on the OML board. So, certainly if the mayor's willing to put in the time, you know, wheel, wheel papers, expenses, you know, travel and that type of stuff, a recommendation approved.
Since he doesn't have anything else to do, I'll move the way.
My second.
Have a motion and a second. Y'all are real generous of that. Call and roll, please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Boy, I can't vote for myself, can I? Okay, okay. I guess I agree to submit my name then. Consider a resolution and a lease purchase agreement with Motorola for replacement and upgrade of radio equipment.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, Don Lynch, Burden's Management Director. For you this evening is a request to consider a resolution authorizing staff to enter into an agreement for lease purchase of radio equipment from Motorola as part of our upgrade and enhancement project for our radio communication system. The radios are vital part of the business we do in the city and this project will include upgrading the existing tower and repeater site that we have here at Shawnee, including the monopole that we have for our existing VHF legacy radio equipment, constructing a new north side repeater to enhance coverage and fill in some gaps that we have in operations over parts of the city of Shawnee, upgrading our radio consoles in the dispatch center, and replacement of the subscriber units, the mobile and portable radios in the police and fire department fleets. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mary Ann, Mary Ann, have you looked at this contact over to make your approval or not?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I, I looked primarily at the lease purchase agreement since it, rather than all the technical things that prior, we have no useful input. The, the lease purchase agreement is in order.
Okay, that's very good. Any other discussion, Commissioners? If not, I'll entertain a motion. So move. Have a motion by Commissioner?
Second.
And a second? Would you read the title, please, ma'am?
This is a resolution authorizing the execution of a lease purchase agreement on equipment.
That's it, huh? I'm used to your long dissertation. I don't know how to handle this.
I hardly knew how to handle it.
I was ready to lean back and go to sleep first. You caught us off-guard there, I will tell you that. Call and roll, please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Oh, man. Acknowledged sales tax report received July 2013.
I don't want to.
Well, sales tax was down from last year of $37,000, which is down 2.62 compared to last year's and we did budget flat, so we're in the hole. Starting about next month or maybe in September, once I get a little more data for this year, we're gonna, I'm gonna concentrate on like maybe the top 10 revenues so that we can see exactly, get a better picture.
This is a question. I hate to say this, but we had terrible storm damage and there's a lot of building materials being bought, purchased at Lowe's and Ace Hardware and all that stuff. Is sales tax charged on those items?
Yes.
So...
If the consumer buys them. Also, the, the tornadoes were what, May 19th?
Right.
Okay.
When did this report that we just got the last funds?
Through like June 15th. No, it's, the big boxes have different timeframes than others, so we could get a little bit...
So, Lowe's is a big box.
Yes, we could be getting more in August for some of that because it's delayed a little bit.
Are we sure that the state did it right this time? You know, last time we had a little...
You didn't get me in trouble with the state.
Well, we had a little challenge though, didn't we? Didn't we have a challenge with them? Felt like the report was a little off or something and it came back and adjusted it?
Yeah.
So, so two point, for the year, last...
For, no, this is just for Walmart.
Okay.
Because this is the new fiscal year.
Okay.
And right now, I don't really have the figures exactly where we were.
Oklahoma City was down like 3.4.
Yeah.
Really? I haven't seen that. How about surrounding?
Who was down, I'm sorry?
Oklahoma City.
I think the whole state was down.
Wow. Wonder what, well, that, I mean, why those materials would have been bought?
But the problem is that they're just now going into that layoff at Tinkerfield and so it's gonna be...
Because I think Friday was their first surloge.
Right.
And it's every Friday.
It's gonna get worse instead of better, I think.
Well, I tell you, if you read my comments in the paper, I'm just begging for somebody to tell me what possibly could be, you know, really causing this because I hope if it is Tinker, someone has told me that, you know, and I don't know with that.
I look for Tim Bagger. How many people leave town every day to go to Oklahoma City to work?
In Plowton County, Zipco was approximately 2,000.
Well, they're losing what, one day a week for 11 weeks or something?
Yeah, 20% of their salary.
For 11 weeks.
That's pretty good.
That's a pretty good jump.
Can you, when you get our report, does it show whether it's restaurants down or you don't have access to those numbers?
I have access to some, but I'd have to do some analysis. Yeah, I, I can start. What I'm gonna do is, we've been concentrating the last couple of years, many years, for just sales tax. I think we need to look at general, maybe I need to break down the sales taxes, like if it's wholesalers or it's, you know, building supplies. We have, I don't know, 170 different categories, but the top 20 is 90% of our sales.
Like they put in our audit report if we just looked at those.
They give a report once a year out. I mean, but we can do it manually.
Well, you know, our motels were just wall-to-wall with FEMA people and all these people that were in town and they had to eat out, you know, and I was really shocked when I fully expected our revenue to be...
There's, there's a lag with the, and a lot of times like Walmart and, well, I'm not supposed to say names, but some of the big boxes, they estimate, okay? So, they may take last year's sales and just estimate and then we get caught up.
No, true.
Because they can't get their stuff in by the end of the month.
Right, but I, but it's just one month or is it, did we finish the, is there a trend? Were there several months in a row?
We've been down last few months, but what I need to do, right now, I'm in the process of turning, we're on a cash basis all through the year and for our fiscal year and we go to accrual. So, I'm in the process of doing that and I need August sales tax to tell you exactly on an accrual basis where we were for the fiscal year, which is gonna show up in our audit.
One, one thing, if I may, on the rebuilding. If I have a home out in the county and I came into Lowe's the next day and myself, I bought plywood and I bought plastic and I bought whatever, I paid sales tax, but if my contractor came and brought it and had it delivered to my house in the county, we didn't get sales tax.
But if it delivered it to Linda's house in the city limits, right, Linda?
We'd get sales tax.
Then we would get sales tax. That's what I'm saying.
And a great deal of the damage was outside the county, that most of the damage was outside the county.
And there was significant amount of damage, so it'd be something hard people would repair themselves, they would have to get a contractor.
Well, I'll say this in public, I was at a mayor's meeting and there's a lot of discussion about we need to figure out a way to monitor projects that are being built here in Shawnee and material being delivered here in Shawnee. If they purchased it in Oklahoma City or wherever they purchased it, in Seminole, we're entitled to that tax revenue and we need to...
It's part of delivery.
Yeah, we need to figure out a way, whether it be our building inspectors or whatever it might be, for us to seriously look at trying to figure that out when they go to a construction site in some way, somehow. Because the people in Oklahoma City, I was talking to the mayor of Choctaw, he said, "Yeah, I don't have anything really," but said, "I should be getting tax revenue from Oklahoma City because they're delivering all this stuff out here," but he said, "The people in Oklahoma City that have businesses, they don't realize that, they just hit tax, you know, for the, the speed and convenience of handling their, it, the sale." And so, therefore, his funds are not being sent to him.
Most commercial, let's say, large commercial suppliers, like electric, they do charge it because I've done, I did business with the company.
Again...
Backyard City, which their taxes for is 4.5%. So, when they deliver to me at Shawnee, Oklahoma, then I have to pay the 8.5% and I made sure of that.
Well, I'd like to challenge the staff and you and whatever it might be that if there's some way we can think seriously about how we might monitor that a little bit more closely with our situation, you know, if we pick up an extra half a million dollars a year, well, that would help us.
Well, it makes you break our budget.
Yeah, I mean, it really helps our budget, so just a thought.
Because we've been down for like the last four or five months.
Yeah.
And the only thing basically saved us was the transfer of assets.
But I've been hearing about this sequester thing at Tinkerfield for five months.
But now it's actually within...
Yeah, but we're trying to blame that on it the previous four months.
That, but some of that is, is true because people have been cutting way back. I know there's a couple of employees here that husbands work there and they, we've cut way back.
I understand. And I fully understand why they're cutting back.
But Commissioners, and remember, you know, from an expense standpoint, with the pension choice option, sometime around September 1st, we'll know exactly what employee has chosen what and what our expenses will be in that regard. We hope that we'll have some savings in our expenses. So, I say that really only to say that, you know, our budget changes from time to time and we just need to monitor it and if it, if it continues on this downward trend, we either have to cut expenses or find some other ways to meet, make ends meet and we'll watch and do that.
But the retirement, we did budget the 21.59 per the actuary, so...
Well, I can tell you this much, our restaurants, you know, Thursday, Friday and Saturday nights, my wife and I last week decided we'd splurge and go out and eat those, those nights and I'm telling you, they were crawling with people. So, there's some people spending money in this city, we just gotta find out how to get more of them to spend more. So, thank you, Cindy.
Wes, I would like to say that most of this insurance money hasn't been distributed yet.
Okay.
And it takes a while to get that stuff in the mill, it's getting there, but the majority of it hasn't been distributed yet.
Well, let me ask you, Commissioner AG, while we're still on this subject, you had a roof damaged real bad. Did that contractor, and I'm not putting you on the spot, I mean, you can't tell them where they have to buy it, but did it, did they come in town, you think, and purchase the...
I think, I think you bought it in either, I think you bought it in Oklahoma City. And one of the things I think they do is they try to match, you know, your, your existing, what you had before.
Your shingles.
Yeah, and then according to color and everything like that. And I think that was the only place he could find it. He went online and found that manufacturer and that color. And they have a list of where those companies are that have that available and it wasn't here, so...
Do you by chance know who that company was? And I would just, okay, recently saying it to see if we got our tax revenue.
Pay city sales tax on it, Linda?
Oh, yeah.
Well, yeah. Again, I'm not sure that, you know...
I did my share of all the things here in Shawnee.
Boy, I, I'm not putting you on the spot. I just knew you had direct, you were involved in it and so you have had to pay for it, right?
We had $80,000 worth of damage and a good part of that has already been replaced and was bought in Shawnee or Potawatomi County, income metals, places like that.
And it's been paid for?
Yeah.
So, the insurance company coughed up the money and paid, so... I'm not, I, I know there's a lot of other people like what you're saying, but I don't let you throw away.
It just depends on the insurance company. You know, there are a lot of people that are already rebuilding that I'm sure that are getting supplies in the Potawatomi County area.
I've been selling lots of buildings and where our program works, we, we say, "Where do you live when you have this building delivered?" And it pays Shawnee sales tax with it, automatic.
Yes.
But it, but if they, if they live at Bethel, you know, we're not getting that.
I'm with you.
But we just, we just go in there and I punch a button on the, on the internet and on the website and automatically...
I think that's the way all the big box stores and one yards like that do it. It's point of delivery, it's automatic, they'll charge the tax.
I just hope so. I just hope so.
Well, I think, I think the businesses really want to do it that way simply because they know they're getting a draw from Shawnee and that's, you know, so they want to contribute to the community too, so...
Yeah, unless sales comes through these taxes.
I'm with you, a little worried about myself, so...
Because the problem is, if that material was picked up by the contractor or somebody else in Oklahoma City, then that's where the tax...[1698.12]
That's where the tax is, actually.
Yeah, that's the thing.
If it's delivered to here, or to the county, or whatever, that's where the tax is going, but if they pick it up themselves, and the tax there, that's the point of sale within Oklahoma City.
Well, we've just got to do everything we can, and look every, you know, cranny and nook, I believe, to try to figure out, where is any of this revenue? If by chance, it's sliding through somewhere, let's capture it, because we need it desperately in our city, okay? City managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners express an interest in wanting to know more about what's going on in the manager's office. So last month, I added this agenda item, and I won't belabor things, but I'll just kinda tell you where we are. Congratulations is in order to Steve Nelmes. I promoted him to utility director, probably before the 4th of July holiday. He needs to be, he needs to be congratulated for his efforts. He competed with national candidates that applied for the position that we flew in. His experience, his loyalty to the city, his diligence, and, and his hard work earned him this position. He needs to be commended for that.
That's great, man. That's great. He's still got a messed up foot, and using that as an excuse?
I haven't seen him hop a lot lately, so. Carrie Corey is the new executive secretary in my office. Carrie's probably been with us for about three weeks now. She spent two weeks with Cindy Gibson, who retired after 25 years with the city, and she's getting her feet wet. If you haven't met her yet, please stop by and say hello. She's doing a great job. We have been interviewing for an airport manager position. I will probably be making an offer to a candidate coming this week, sometime, if I can, if he and I can reach one another. Number four, the Abidas Foundation. Commissioners, the hospital sale netted a foundation in town called the Abidas Foundation. They are going to begin their grant schedule this August 15th. The staff and myself, and the mayor have met a couple of times already in the last couple of weeks, as soon as we found out what that was gonna be, what that schedule was gonna be. The first one is here in August, and the second one, I believe, is in April.
Right.
Or in spring anyways. There are four kind of, or five different things that we're talking about, and more information will come to the commissioners in the, in the future. The way this process works is, is they want you to put in a letter of intent as to what the project is, and they'll respond to that letter of intent, and say, "Yes, go ahead, give an application into our office for the grant." There's $100 million worth in that foundation, and they have to loan out 5% of it a year. According to the IRS, in the first three years, they don't have to loan out all of it at one time, but they do, they are beholden, have committed to a 30 or 35 million dollar improvement to St. Anthony Hospital, so that's part of what they'll be granting out, but they're also looking for other grant applications. So we've been working both with our comprehensive plan, our capital improvement plan, and some other popular projects that we know in the community, and here are some of the ones that we're talking about. Again, they're not written in stone, but they're things that we're talking about. Participating with the Shawnee Senior Center in the Auditorium Heating and Air, we budgeted about half for that project. We'd like to probably ask the Abidas potentially for some funding toward the, getting the heating and air conditioning into that project. Why that one is important is because if Kate can actually put events in there during the warm day during the summer, then she can begin to generate more revenue for the senior center, because all the, all the proceeds that come off of leasing or renting out that facility go into the senior center's coffers, so she can use that for activities over there. James Rice and I have been talking to the YMCA about some different things that they wanna do, two projects there. One, we just finished the airport track, we're about ready to come down Kickapoo Street with sidewalks on both sides, but we don't have a way, we don't have sidewalks on Saratoga to get everybody from Airport Road to Kickapoo. So we talked about putting sidewalks in there, and adding an active, or passive and active recreation in and around YMCA and the ballfields that are there, so that would probably be a YMCA request, with the city, of course, donating the right of way, and probably doing the engineering potentially. Again, not written in stone, but just some projects that we're talking about doing. Sidewalks, sidewalks are starting to come together in town, and we've got a list of sidewalks that we would like to implement, but we've only got so much money. What we've talked about doing is coming up with a plan to partner up with the Abidas Foundation, and the city commits some dollars annually for maybe a five-year period, Abidas doing the same thing, and we put a pair of those monies together, and we go out there and prioritize the ones that need to be done, and then in, in five years, we could really have a dent in some of those sidewalks, and some of the areas that we, that we need to concentrate on. And finally, there are some folks that are out there looking for dollars for Woodland Veterans Park, and our pool, and we think that would probably be a good, a good opportunity to, to apply for dollars there. I say all that to say, you know, we're kinda talking in amongst staff, we wanna go in, one other one that we talked about today, that we, there's a, there's a first aid kit that Chief France and the police department want to apply for, where every law enforcement agent in our city has one of these in their automobile. And it's a life-saving type technique, tourniquets, and bandages, and things like that. Believe it or not, we don't have those in our vehicles, and probably don't have them in sheriffs' and some of the other city vehicles either. That's about a $50,000 proposition, and we talked about doing it in the entire region that the Abidas Foundation serves, and they've got a district that they're calling their area. And, and all of their, all of their projects are, are, you know, health and environmental related, so everything that we've talked about today are some of those projects, they're capital projects we certainly could pair up with. Certainly, you know, when you go through the grant process, and you're looking at putting money, and resources, and in-kind time toward, we think those projects are timely, they're in our comp plan, they're on our capital improvement plan, and so I thought I'd throw that out there, is commissioners have other ideas about applications that we could make. We don't know exactly how much money they'll be dispersing this year, but we wanted to come up with a suite of, of ideas, if you will, so that we can apply for some of that money, and put it back into the community, so.
Excuse me, Brian?
Sure.
Didn't, isn't it like we give them a letter on these subjects, and then we have a period of time to come back and, and take the next step, if it's of interest to them?
They'll notify us, I assume they'll notify us, and let us know whether or not they think the project is a viable one or not. If so, then we would go through a more involved, much more extensive research, and we'd get resolutions from the city commission, and, you know, other, other agencies if needed. Three other quick things. We have our 911 visit in Lawton, the 24th. That project's still going along with our efforts, we understand that we're making some pretty good progress to get to that way. If I didn't mention this in our last meeting, the county commissioner's actually passed the resolution also, so we're making inroads. I know it seems like it's been forever that we aren't making this happen, but it just, you know, we'll just bite the self on it, one bite at a time, and get down that road, and see if it's something that we still wanna do, so. Friday, well, tomorrow, the PCDA potential, the situation for us to service those clients out there. Tomorrow morning, the assumption of the debt on the OWRB's agenda is, is on the agenda for tomorrow morning. The assumption would be in that SMA would assume the debt that PCDA has, and Dr. Taren and I will be going up there to speak to the board tomorrow morning. Last Friday, PCDA met, and I understand that there was some, some misinformation, I'll say, out there about the PCDA, and serving those customers out there. I'll just say that the board tabled that, I was not at that meeting Friday afternoon, and more information will be forthcoming, but I think there was just some, some misinformation in my talking to some of the folks around the subject on Friday, so we'll keep, we'll keep working toward that one. Finally, I spent two days in Miami, Oklahoma, of all places, at the City Managers Association Conference for some continuing education time, and I appreciated the time to be able to do that. And if you have any questions, I'll be, I'll be to answer them.
I do thank you for that report. It is really helpful to us as commissioners, and that's very well done. Thank you.
You need some, at the next meeting, PCDA meeting, you need some commissioners to be there with you.
Mary Ann's got an appointment, I think, to meet with the county attorney's office, and there's some work going on there, but that would probably be a good idea, I'll let, I'll let you guys know.
Let us know. I think, you had a question?
Yeah, did you ever get a, or do some investigation of providing some coverage on our mall, in case it gets wiped out more than...
I never did, Commissioner.
I, I, that worries me greatly, because you, the evidence was straddled Oklahoma, when they lost the Tangier Mall, and it just wiped out the...
Loss, loss of revenue insurance.
Yeah. I'd like, I'd like to push that a little bit, just to see, and then, of course, we will...
It's a good time to look at.
Yeah, because, just think what we'd be looking at, you know, we're worried about $38,000, you take away the mall, Sears, Walmart. So I, I don't know, I mean, I don't even know what the premiums are, but I'd like to find out.
Can we buy that insurance just like from March through August?
Yeah, but you still pay the same premium.
Oh, still pay the same.
You know, back in the, Seminole, Boatswain blew away, December the 3rd or 4th, you remember that, 9 o'clock in the morning?
That's true. That's, I do remember that, now that you brought it up, I do. Okay, anything else for the city manager? If not, we'll move on to item number 12, consider bids. Exterior restoration, exterior painting, and window replacement for the Shawnee Municipal Auditorium.
Did you get some bids this time, James?
Yes.
Wow.
Probably need to ask that guy's bid payment down there, how's that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mayor, Commissioners, we bid this out in the newspaper, and sent to several internet companies that, that provide information to many contractors. This is for the exterior restoration, exterior painting, and window replacement on the municipal auditorium. We did add in there another option, on one of the front columns, there are some, some bricks that, that cracked in half, there's not many of them, and that, that option is for them to pull in brick out and replace those, instead of sealing those cracks up on that. It would look a whole lot better, and, and I made a trip to the city and did find the exact brick for that, so. We're gonna begin with commercial waterproofing, out of Broken Arrow. The base bid amount was $112,670, with no option. Second bid was from Mid Continental Restoration Company out of Fort Scott, Kansas. Base bid was $181,000, with the option of $1,500 to replace those bricks. That is, that is all the bid on it. It'd be staff's recommendation that we defer this to next commission meeting to award.
Okay, motion, we have a motion by Commissioner Harrod, second by Commissioner Hall, to defer this to the next meeting. Call or roll please?
Herod.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Question carries.
Item number 13, new business.
Commissioner, no new business this evening.
Number 14, administrative reports.
No administrative reports, sir.
Okay, that being said, I will adjourn our city commission meeting, and we'll take up the Shawnee Municipal Airport Authority, I'm sorry, Municipal Authority, and I'll call it to order, and we do have a quorum. I'll consider approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hall, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Smith. Call or roll please?
Paul.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Herod.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Question carries.
Item number two, consider bids, Jefferson Terrace Waterline Project. Could we have a staff report on that, please, sir?
Need you walk on the vote, will you?
I know, he was limping there for a while.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and City Commission. Tonight, we're gonna, staff's gonna make the recommendation, recommendation to award the Jefferson Terrace Waterline Project 14-01 to Orion Construction in the amount of After reviewing the bid tabulations and questionnaires, staff would like to proceed with the request, and asking commission to approve the request, awarding the project to Orion Construction. And the budgeted amount is $1 million.
Were they the lowest bid?
Yep. Yeah, they were best, best in lowest bid.
Okay, we have a staff report and a recommendation. Chair, will entertain, entertain a motion?
I move, we accept the recommendation, and staff recommendation, and approve or award the contract.
Okay, a second by Commissioner Harrod. Call or roll please?
Paul.
Aye.
Herod.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Question carries.
Item B, water treatment sludge removal project.
Seems like what it says is, anyway.
Yeah. This, this is actually, this is the sludge removal, we've actually, we were approved to go out for bids, and these are the bid tabulations, and I'll read these off City Commission and Mr. Chairman. This is the bid tabulation sheet for the water treatment plant sludge removal, Project SMA 14-02. The first bidder is JS Herring Company out of Athens, Tennessee, for $377,000.[1670.04]